All right, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the, I always have to look at the agenda to get the date. November 8th meeting of the council, the town of Washington. I welcome everyone here. We have an agenda in front of us. Sorry, I have a lot of junk.
Oh, you really do?
I do. It's a little lightweight. We have an agenda in front of us. I would like to move to approve the agenda. I have a couple of things to add to it, but I'd like to just go ahead and get a motion and a second for approval of the agenda, and then I will bring up the things that I would propose adding to the agenda, if that makes sense. So I got a move and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gail. And what I would like to add is a closed session at the end of the meeting. It is for the same purpose as our last closed session. So Mr. Bennett, you'll be able to use the same language again for that closed session?
Yes.
And then also, I'd like to put under B, new business discussion of sidewalks.
Ed, can we further, under old business, information slash action for B?
I'm sorry. I missed that.
Make it B, information slash action.
Yes.
Water and sewer.
For sidewalks?
No. B on old business.
Oh, information, action, okay. All right. So sidewalks. No, sidewalks. Yep. All right. All right. Are you, I'm fine with the amendments. Are you fine with the amendments?
I'm fine.
All right. Roll call vote to approve the amended agenda, Jean?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. We have an agenda. Thank you very much. We have minutes from the October 11th council meeting. Are there any changes?
They look good to me.
All right. Well, does that sound like a-
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mary Ann. So we have a motion from Gail and a second from Mary Ann. Roll call or any other discussion, any questions or anything? Hearing none. Roll call vote to approve, Jean?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. We have approval of the minutes. We're going swimmingly. I am not going to have nearly as long a report this time, but unfortunately, the continuous cross that I bear is the post office. The, I know that I have an outstanding, before I talk about the post office, I know I have a, the process for applications of people to the town. I know I am tasked with working on that, and I have been overwhelmed with some other things, but I do plan to present something to the council at the December meeting on that, so I apologize. In terms of the post office, the utilities are in, with the exception of the REC, the Rappahannock Electric Company, has not completed the hookup. They are in the process right now of marking out how they'll place the wire between the pole and the building, and unfortunately, they are backlogged. What else is new? And they are anticipating it will take them several weeks before they can do it. The contractor has got portable generators and is going ahead without that and get things done, so that's great. The panel came in last week, which had been held up, as many things have been, by the supply chain. That's in place. Water is running, wastewater is running. Life is mostly good. I think it's appropriate to do kudos to, or appreciation to, a group of people. Drew Mitchell, who is here, has been an enormous amount of time. John Fox Sullivan, Von Evenson, has been a bulldog in this process, and I mean that in all the most affectionate and respectful ways. Ruth Welsh, Kim Abraham, Nancy Bunton, and others who have given their time to help facilitate the opening of the post office. It really has been a group of a lot of people who have helped really facilitate a lot of things to really start moving much more rapidly. I've been working with post office officials to facilitate getting over these hurdles, and there are others who have also been of help. So it is, not only is a child raised by a village, but it seems also a post office. And I, I think that because we are coming into the holiday rush, the postal service, as I understand, really doesn't want to disrupt service by trying to transfer people out of one post office location to another during the holiday season. So my guess is that we will not be seeing the new post office opening until sometime early in the new year. That would be my educated guess. Finally, and I know I've done this before, but I can't begin to thank enough the citizens of the zip code for their patience. It should not have taken this long, but it did, and I want to thank all of them for all that they've endured, the long lines. Unfortunately, we have, I think, one more season, but the end does appear to be near. So, a couple of other great things. As I discussed last time, the Christmas in Little Washington parade has been canceled because of COVID. However, there is going to be a day for us as the town of Washington to shine and put out our prettiest colors, and that day is December 5th. That is a Sunday, and it is our day to look festive. We're going to have a host of activities centered around Avon Hall. It'll start around 1:00 in the afternoon. There'll be artisans fair. I understand Santa is coming down on the Polar Express. There will be singing. We're going to have a bonfire, and then we're going to have activities up in the town slightly later in the afternoon. So people will be able to start at Avon Hall, walk up the hill, and be able to participate in activities in the town. So it should be a festive day. My guess is sometime between 1:00 and 4:00, and we will be sending out a list of all the activities as this moves forward. To that end, I urge all citizens of the town, if you can, please work to bring holiday decorations to your home and make the season festive. Let's really show off our town for December 5th. I also want to share with you that I submitted last week a grant proposal for studying pathways throughout the town to make the town more pedestrian-friendly, as well as, this will be a follow-up to the recent study that we received, that I requested and we received from the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission, that we received, I think I shared it with you at the last meeting, if not-
You did.
And we should have a copy in the office for anybody who wants to see it. And I'm preparing a grant proposal this week pending council approval, and I'll talk more about that in a little bit. And lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate Mr. O'Connell on the successful opening of patios. It looks like it's had a nice opening.
And it's got the best chai tea latte in the world.
There you go. So, that is all of my report. Planning commission? No planning commission report?
I don't, I don't think they met.
All right. Are they planning to meet? Okay. If they would meet, they would be on the 4th Monday of the month? Okay. The architectural review board, Mr.?
We met last, we met last week, or last month, excuse me. And George Eaton had a modification wanting to be approved. John, Diane, all the officers told that, um, that's only, uh, not great for moving.
I'm sorry, Drew. Do you mind starting over and going to the microphone, just so that the people who are listening to the, to this?
Recording, yeah.
Drew Mitchell, Chair of Architectural Review Board. We had three applications, which were mostly approved. One was George Eaton down on Gay Street, had some modifications. Another was John and Diane's old place off of Main Street, replacing aluminum siding with cedar, et cetera. Of course, those are approved. And then, and then there was a long list of modifications for the Rick Tudor on Mount Salem, most of which were approved. Well, actually, everything that was applicable was approved. She had some things in there which were outside of our purview, so we said, let's, you know, knock yourself out. The other, the other unfortunate news, or the only unfortunate news, is George Eaton is, this coming week's architectural review board meeting will be his last, so he's retiring. And so we'll have an opening. So I'm presuming Barbara will send out a notice to the town for, for people who are interested. I know one resident who's keenly interested, so I think we might be okay, and he's highly qualified, so we should be in good, in good shape, but that's it.
Hopefully, it's who I think it is.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good.
Treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report. You have the, the magic in front of you here. It looks, everything looks quite positive until you get to the wastewater, which, if you just add the numbers up, you'll see that we are currently, if you take the revenue and you take all the expenses, including the almost $200,000 a year loan, we are running at, only covering 24% of the expenses on that. I don't think there are any other, I mean, that's not really a surprise, we've been talking about it enough. Were there any questions on that?
No.
Bills to be paid. Nothing unusual.
Any questions from council members about the bills? All right. If not, would you like to have, would you like to move to approve the bills?
Yes, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve the bills to be paid.
All right. Second?
I'll second.
All right, Jean, thank you. Any other comments on it? Roll call vote, Jean?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. The bills are paid. All right. Public Works Committee.
I defer until we get to it.
Okay. All right. Mr. Bennett?
Zoning administrator, there wasn't much of it, activity. Still sort of moving along on Mr. Krabi's application for the project that he's working on, and we're down to addressing the tech, technical comments that ESS has given him, and he's given a response now, and we're in the process of evaluating all that. And then there was one application for a temporary structure which was approved. The, under town attorney, I have to bring up a topic. At the last meeting, the council elected to make a donation of a portion of the funds that were going to be used for the Christmas festivities to the Benevolent Association. And the General Assembly, in their wisdom, has codified who may receive donations from a local government entity. And having read through all of those, and that's not on there, so-
Because it's religious-based?
That would be, that would be the primary factor, yes. No, can I make a donation to an entity that's controlled in whole or in part by a religious entity? That's what it comes down to. Although, in a way, they make certain exceptions, but this is not one of them.
I think I made the original proposal, so I would propose then that the 100% go to the food pantry. If there's someone who would like to second that?
Awesome.
All right. She's faster than you.
She is.
Mary Ann seconds it. Is there any other discussion or suggestions or thoughts?
I think the food pantry, when the Christmas in Little Washington parade comes, they get an enormous financial benefit, which they will not be getting this year. So they're getting 100% seems to make sense. I am sad that we are not able to also support the benevolent fund, which is also a very good charity in the community, and I applaud all the work that they do. Having a motion before us and a second, roll call vote to approve to have 100% of the budgeted funds that were to be, have been spent on the holiday party at the town of Washington to be applied or donated to the food pantry, roll call vote, Jean?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all very much. All right, Mr. Bennett?
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. You should never end on bad news, Mr. Bennett. Always end on good news.
The lawyer, that's his job.
That's it. All right.
Give me a few minutes to think here.
He'll jump back in.
He'll jump back. All right. Moving on to old business, discussion of allowing council member to attend a meeting electronically. Mr. Bennett, are you going to lead us into this?
If you'd like, I can, I can go over sort of the philosophy behind what's drafted here for council to consider and modify as they may wish. This, what's, what's set forth here meets all the legal standards of the Virginia Code. However, you'll notice that under reasons, personal reasons, that would qualify for a person to participate electronically, nothing is said. However, whether, any, any council person that makes a request to attend a meeting electronically, at the next meeting, it's got to be set forth in detail, the basis of the request, and the action taken. So my thought was, is let the, the, let the wisdom of public review, review by the entire council, indicate what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. If there were an ongoing problem, it's, this is just a policy, it could be modified right, right away at the next meeting. So-
So let me understand that and put it in non-legal terms. Basically, if someone requests to participate electronically, they have to give a significantly laid-out explanation-
Yes.
-of why at the next meeting?
No, they have to give it to the mayor or the vice mayor the day of or before the meeting they wish to participate in electronically, because you have to set up everything so they can not only speak in, but, and, but they can also hear everything too, so.
Is this, is this document going to be, I would assume this document is public record?
Yes.
Okay. I want to make sure that everybody was clear on that.
Yeah. You know, I started to try and work through a list of what constitutes valid personal reasons, and once you get into it, where does it end?
Mm-hmm.
And where does it really start? So I think everybody will know it when they see it, and also know it, there wasn't such a situation, if that comes up, because it's got to be brought up at the next, at that meeting, and everyone can comment and take whatever action thereafter they deem appropriate. On the electronic, paragraph five, electronic meetings during an emergency, that's where the entire council meets electronically, and that can be called by the mayor, the vice mayor, or, or council persons. Under the town charter, a meeting can be called by three council persons. In this case, I just picked the figure of four being a majority of the council, so. And what can be, the business that could be transacted at those meetings, council will recall, we ran into some, a really significant issue about exactly what you could do at the beginning. The code restricted it to taking action only in relation to what gave rise to the emergency. Now, that's since been changed, so council can, can consider and act on anything that's necessary for the continued operation of the government.
All right. I noticed that this is done so that it could be adopted today. So I guess, so there should be a, is this the form of a resolution?
So, it would be adoption of a policy, that's what-
Okay.
We've got a separate category that-
All right. So it's an adoption of a policy. I presume it requires a roll call vote?
Yes.
All right. So is there a motion to ex-
I have a couple of questions.
Well, what I thought I'd do is do the motion and a second, and then we can have questions. So is there a motion to approve this?
Make the motion to approve.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Gail. Now, questions?
Well, I, I have a-
Jean, would you use your microphone, please?
Well, my microphone's very high.
Oh, you've got the high one.
I don't understand why it's so high. I'm a little person. Doesn't it move down?
No, not that one. May not.
So, I'll-
That's, that's fine. You're, you're doing fine.
Okay. Thank you. From last meeting, we have a policy adopted pursuant of VA Code 22.2, et cetera, as for electronic meetings. And then this is obviously your, or I don't know, maybe not obviously, but is your rendition of this for us to consider, right?
It's just, it's just really restating what's in the code. That's all it is.
Although-
With a few, few modifications, for instance, the, that would go to the mayor, or if unavailable, the vice mayor, and for the electronic meetings, the mayor, then the vice mayor, then, to be called by four members of council. That's not in the code, but basically, most everything else is, and that, it's required, so I'm not going to say that it has to be adopted, but-
Well, certainly, this was a-
But in the code, I mean, one difference that I noticed was, in what you have, that you've added that someone can be absent for as many meetings as needed for temporary permanent disability, which isn't in the code.
There's no restriction on it. There's a restriction for personal reasons, that no more than two in a year.
Right.
But for the other, there's no restriction on it, so it just doesn't restrict it, so I made it explicit that it's not restricted. But of course, that's, you know, one of these things that, nothing here is written in stone, except for some things, but that is one of the things that, what, whatever the pleasure of council might be, that certainly be in the policy.
John, I have a question. Are you finished, Jean?
I'm sort of befuddled. Okay, well, I'll figure it out.
About that, Mary Ann. Okay, I'm, it says here in the first sentence about, without regard to the identity of the council person requesting remote participation. And then, under E, the next page, it says, if it's approved, the matter, the minutes shall include the specific nature of the personal matter as cited by the council person.
Well, what I was trying to say in the first paragraph, and probably inartfully said, was that you can't favor one person over another person, you've got to treat everybody the same. That's what I was, what I was trying to say there.
Yeah, it's sort of confusing.
Did we receive this ahead of time, or did we just receive this?
This is the first time we've seen this.
All right. I would, I would, we have a motion from Mary Ann to adopt this. Mary Ann, would you feel comfortable withdrawing that motion? And I'll make a motion that we-
Table it.
Study this and bring it up at the December meeting?
Yeah, let's do that. I definitely make a motion.
Good plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Gail, seconds. I think we can just go with a voice vote to defer to table. Correct, Mr. Bennett?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah. All those in favor of tabling, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask anybody who has comments, if they'd like to send them to me, I'll put them all together-
Good idea.
And do some red lines, that type of thing.
Perfect.
Mr. Bennett, I do want to thank you for putting this together.
Mm-hmm.
So, all right. And Barbie, you'll go ahead and get this onto the December. All right. Thank you. Mr. Whitehead, your moment in the sun.
Thanks. I've really got a moment in the sun since last June.
So this is going to end on a positive note?
Depends on your point of view, yes. So, you know, the year's been off to a good start. We do have to revisit the issue we brought up in June, and so we do, it's all about sewer and water rates. It has been a very good year from a, from a revenue perspective, and that combined with the American Recovery Act funds, we've actually been able to get after some of our deferred maintenance. However, it's, you know, Brad and I are sometimes like the boys with our finger in the dike, you know, it's, you know, you've got your, you've got your finger in here and the water shoots out by your head in that direction. And last week's leak, or last month's leak in the water main was just indicative of that, when we discovered that in fact we hadn't been doing maintenance on the valves for, in the system, so we couldn't isolate the leak. So anyway, long way around of saying we still have challenges to confront. But the water, water revenues continue to be very high, and that's great, so I think there's no need for us to take, but it were rather draconian steps we proposed earlier in the year as far as rates. That's the good news. On the sewer side, things continue, as Gail indicated, to be very bad, and the date, we're running about two to one revenue to expenses on the sewer system. Income is around $62,000. The expenses were $123,000. So what I'm going to propose is that, you know, we all, all chip in, so 102 folks who are signed up for the sewer system, so, and propose that we do a $8 increase in the base sewer rate. So this doesn't impact anybody who's using above the, the base rate, but for your regular month-to-month bill, if you're using the metal services, it would go up $8 from $40 to $48. Now, that only, that's going to increase the town's revenue about $10,000 over the fiscal year, which is not a huge increase, but every little bit, I think it's important for us to try to pay for the, the system, or the service that we're all being afforded. I want to modify my earlier motion regarding rates and just suggest that we tonight adopt an $8 increase in the sewer rate. That would bring the monthly minimum charge for sewer to 40, from $40 to $48, and the minimum combined water and sewer bill for all residents to $75 a month.
Instead of 67.
Instead of 67. So it'd be an $8 increase.
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 All right.
Welcome any quick.
Well, I second the motion first.
You should second the motion.
I second the motion.
Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Thanks for all your hard work on this, and Brad, too. I'd be able to, but why is there such a disparity between water and the sewer? More revenue on the water, it also, is it because of maintenance?
So it's-
Recovery Act?
Um, it's, they're operated as independent entities. They have the wastewater treatment plant and the waterworks, and so they're, they're handled differently, or separately, and the expenses on the sewer side are tremendously higher than on the water side. Even though the metering is the same, you're right, you know, the charge, what's coming and what, you know, going, the expense on the sewer side is higher. That's why it's balanced if you divide the bill out, try to do something to cover it up. Mercifully, on the water side, we tend to run a little bit in the, in the black, which allows us to deal with some of the maintenance issues on that side.
It isn't like there's been major maintenance issues.
Uh, well, I would say that we found ourselves in this position because there was a great deal of deferred maintenance over there. deal of deferred maintenance over the years, and we're, we're reaching the point where aging, as Brad can go at, at in detail.
Don't ask him to. We'll be here till midnight.
We're reaching a point where the plant itself is aging, you know, reaching some sort of milestones, and then we have a number of things that just weren't necessarily kept up over the years that have caught up with us, so we've got sort of a really tough spot just here in the next, hopefully 24 months or so, as we try to get our hands around all that deferred maintenance and.
You also have the, the bond is on the wastewater, correct?
Yes. Uh, yes, I mean, we're able to manage that out of general revenues, what we're just trying to do is.
No, I understand, but.
But yes, I mean, I'm holding that aside.
That's also a big discrepancy between the water costs and the wastewater, is that we have that big bond.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, I'm holding that aside from numbers that I cited tonight, but yes, that's, that's a factor, too. Now, we, short of us increasing rates by something like 200 or 300%, we'll never pay that bond out of the wastewater treatment plant income, but, you know, mercifully, the general revenue, that what we're just trying to do is close the gap a little bit, making that, holding aside the bond.
And Joe, when would this take effect, in January?
January.
And then, what happens? Um, so for, for one year, this will be in effect, and then what?
It would be permanent raised.
It'll be permanent, but then, are you going to review it? Are we going to review it?
Yes, no, we, we did, as I, I mentioned, I think, in my last thing, we're required, my original motion includes the laws requiring us to annually review all rates in June. We'll revisit this in June, our regular budget.
In June or in March?
March.
Or March, brother, I'm sorry.
We'll start the discussion in March.
Beginning of the fiscal year, but in March.
Right, right, exactly.
Well, and then that, you know, at that point, we'll have sort of a full year's numbers, we need to do some other things. I know in my note total, I mentioned that we may want to consider indexing rates going forward, inflation just to help us keep this gap somewhat close, but I think that's something we've got the room to think about and.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Anything else, Marianne, did you?
No.
Do we need to have a public meeting before we raise the rates?
The council years ago adopted an ordinance that permits council to adjust the rates by resolution. That doesn't have to be an advertised, public, legal, public hearing, anything like that, but could hold a hearing.
We, we did, we did have one, just the beginning of the discussion of raising them, we, we had one public hearing already.
Right.
So Joe is just amending, Joe's just amending his, his motion.
Right.
Considerable reduction.
Um, this is part of, of what you had talked about last spring.
That very long, that very long.
And we deferred, deferred some of that.
And deferred, you know, we voted to defer final action until.
Right.
But if you want to.
I.
Not going to take, take action until, I mean, this won't take effect.
I don't know about other people, but I will express my own personal feeling that I don't want anyone to ever think that we are blindsiding them. I, I think that it, just for me, it, it would make sense to, um, put it on the agenda for, make it a public thing, so that we can vote on it in December. I'm sorry to.
Oh, I don't.
Um, delay it for a month, but that would be my amendment to your.
Yeah, and as I said, that's why I wanted to bring it up tonight, was so.
Right.
Sounds good.
So, you have not made a motion yet, so I will make a motion that we advertise for a public meeting to have an increase in the rate, in the base rate for the wastewater of $8, monthly rate of $8, effective January of 2022.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's my motion, is to advertise for us to do this at the December meeting. Mr. Bennett, does that sound appropriate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion?
Oh, I think it's a good thing to do, because I've already gotten, um, questions from different people in town.
Yeah.
Regarding this.
All right. A roll call vote to approve, indicate by saying yes, Jean?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Barbie, you've got that also on your, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may mention one thing, that, talking about all the dollars and cents here, that the wastewater bond was set up by the, the authority that issued it, a very accelerated amortization schedule. So paying it off entirely is now on the horizon, and that happens, whereas the, the water was FHA loans, and they were 30 and 33 years, much, much longer.
Which almost is done, I think.
Yeah, and they're, yeah, they're getting close to being paid off also.
Yeah.
Really have, I mean, really have like a eight or nine-year problem, until we're over this. At that point, the town's finances are incredibly, like God willing, but it's really just suffering through the, 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 paying off with the, and the FHA.
I think we're right at 1.8 million left.
We're on a good trajectory, revenue's on a good trajectory.
Nine years.
We just need to get through, it's really the recapitalization of the system, you know, fixing the old meters, fixing various deferred. And, you know, we can be in a good shape, it's just. Belt tightening years till we get there.
Speaking of which, it's a perfect segue into new business, point A, which is that.
Yes.
I am working, I had a conversation with an organization that does funding for a number of different things that pertain to wastewater and water systems, and we are, with the approval of the town council, I will go ahead and talk with them about a proposal to do an engineering study, kind of top-to-bottom engineering study of the water and wastewater systems, prioritize the capital needs that we have, what's working, what's not working. What's really important is, this study would be working with our current vendors, Country Water and ESS, and with Brad, and Joe, as much as he wants to be involved. To, to look at this, to give us finally an opportunity to get a, a well-thought-out plan for the long range, to bring our system up to snuff. So, I don't know if there needs to be a resolution or anything like that, I bring it to the town's attention, town council's attention. Mr. Bennett, I don't think I need any kind of action, do I? I just, if there is any strong opposition, first of all, I'd be shocked.
Go get the money.
Is there actually a commitment to expend funds at this point with, with?
No, I, I just want to get the approval to go ahead on behalf of the town to submit the proposal.
Get the grant.
To get the grant to do this. Um, and.
So if you're not spending anything, let's.
Go for it.
All right. So hearing no great objection, I will go ahead and start that process. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is I had a long discussion with representative from VDOT last week about repairing the sidewalks, and we've already put in an informal application, I don't know if I'll have to put in a formal permit, but I've gone ahead and emailed them to, and we walked the sidewalks on the west side of Gay Street, the side that has the, the theater and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. There's a lot of crumbling sidewalk there, and we also walked along Porter Street to see if we might be able to do something there, and, um, that brought up the other issue, which is the sidewalk on the east side of Gay Street, in front of the county courthouse, and I wanted to bring it up for a public discussion with you. My sense is that VDOT would fix that sidewalk, it's now a brick-inlaid sidewalk. Unfortunately, what they would do is they would take up all the bricks, they would fix it, level it out, and, and probably put down concrete. It would, to do otherwise, would, to do brick, would require the town to fund that, and the town is not in the, in a position right now to fund it. This is a, a heavy, heavy issue. I worry about the, about someone becoming injured. There's a lot of traffic that use the courthouse, and I'd like to make sure that I talk with my friends in the county, to see where their opinions are on this. But I wanted to get a sense from my fellow council members, what they felt, and also any members of the town who'd like to speak during the public forum on this issue. This is really an information gathering.
Is it, it is such a dangerous sidewalk, those bricks, it's just, I mean, I'd love nothing more than to say, as treasurer, yeah, go get it, but, I mean, just the brickwork alone is tens of thousands of dollars, but is there something else? Maybe Brad knows, my secret weapon here. Is there something where possibly VDOT can rip it all up, put down the concrete, so that we temporarily, even though it may not be very attractive, at least have something safe, and then find somebody who can do brick, what would you call it, veneers? Make it look like brick. There's got to be a way to do that.
You can also do the thin bricks.
That's what I mean.
Also do stamped asphalt.
Yes.
Well, I was going to say, if VDOT's doing this, I'm wondering if we can't get them to lay colored concrete with a brick pattern. They have.
Ooh.
Basically templates, and they just move along and press it in, and it'll give you the impression of brick, but the concrete coming in would need to be dyed.
That's a great idea.
That might be a minimum. The, the thing you got there is that if you consider the brick that's there, it's historic. It is very, very old brick. So I don't know if there is any money from Richmond under the guise of historic preservation that would say, okay, the brick is not functional, it's, it's a safety issue, but they might have money to put in new brick. And so VDOT just simply levels it, gives it a good firm base, and then you go in with brick, and it might be recovered brick from another building that's been torn down, or something like that. Um, I don't know who you would contact under Virginia preservation.
I'd love to.
Oh, I'd love to.
Yeah, because considering the, the history of the buildings, you know, and again, if you look at that brick, I mean, it's older than all of us combined, certainly, but we definitely need something that's safer and more walkable.
I took up the old brick and had somebody lay it down, but, you know, I'll definitely look into it.
Okay.
See what.
Yes. Yeah, because I think.
Maybe get a grant or something.
Yeah, because I think we, we probably have plenty of time, because VDOT doesn't move fast on anything, and would have to be into one of their budget cycles, so.
But that's great that you, that you got it started.
Yeah, but that would be my thought on that.
And that's very helpful, what you said there.
Yeah, or, like I say, at a worst case, at least if this, the concrete is dyed red, and then they just use imprint patterns, and they get it to look like brick.
Okay. Thank you for all that.
You're also sort of complicated by what's, not just age, but the trees.
The trees have to come out.
Well, not necessarily, from what he was saying, I think they would raise it.
Oh.
So that the roots would no longer have an effect.
And if you start to raise it too far, then you're going to have to have a railing too tall.
Yeah.
So I think the better thing is, is they come in and they cut it down where it is, and those trees are pretty well established, cutting a, a root isn't probably going to kill the tree, you know, and that's where, here again, that's where you need an arborist to make the judgment on that.
Wood and dogwood, that's a perfect example.
Yeah, the wood that has no trunk left.
Yeah, probably the worst place where the tree comes into play is when you come around the sheriff's office.
Right, there's terrible.
Those are absolutely terrible, and the other thing about those trees is, you've got a tremendous amount of electrical lines and things like that, and as those trees get old, start to deteriorate, limbs come off, and next thing, they're taking down power lines.
One of those trees is almost right off.
Right, right, so it's a question of, maybe a tree has to come out, unfortunately, but then, that strip of sidewalk could then be properly done, because it is quite high if you step off the edge, but if that could be relayed, and then some sort of, you know, soil put in there, so that if someone steps off, they're not going down 12 inches, they're just onto the grass. But I think that sidewalk is probably the worst as compared to what's on Gay Street. So, the, the other thing, Mr. Mayor, when you are on Gay Street at the intersection of, is it Gay Street and Porter, yeah, Porter?
Yes.
The catch basin.
Yes.
Is in the street, and it does not catch anything, because it was not installed correctly.
Yeah, I, well, I talked to him, not about that, because I don't have the engineering background, I was an arts and crafts person, but I did, we did talk to him about cleaning it out, and they're going to start trying to maintain an annual schedule of cleaning out those drains.
Okay.
So you're right, they have two drains, right, one on either side of that ramp.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, it doesn't seem to be terribly effective.
No.
And that's my non-engineering perspective.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I don't know what we can do about that.
Yeah, the one that's on the, um.
Is it the one on Porter, or the one on Gay that's the ineffective?
Uh, well, it's actually on Gay Street still, but it's right at that intersection. If you look at it, it sits off from the curb, and the way it's sitting, the water just doesn't go into it, it just goes around the corner.
Right at that corner of the sheriff's office.
And if there's a lot of flow, what happens, whatever it picks up, flows into the street and doesn't simply go around the corner, for which there is a, another catch the water should be going into.
Right, right.
But then you, then compounding that problem is, then when you get down to Main Street, that catch basin always collects debris and plugs up, as does the other one across, by the old packing shed, I mean, none of them were put in properly.
No.
And so they, they get covered with debris, and as a result, you have water going all over the place.
Uh.
Was that VDOT's responsibility to clean them out?
Yeah.
Probably should be done quarterly at that though.
Well, I say annually, but I think they're, they're going to start putting a schedule, and I, I don't know what that schedule is. Do you recall, Barbara?
We did not, because it was the, the, VDOT.
Perfect.
Oh, great.
There were talks that we should have a regular call.
Yeah, probably after, like after the, the leaves have fallen, that's when you want that all cleaned out and clear.
Because right now, it's, it's actually a, a walking hazard, because you don't even know there's a drain there, because it's filled with leaves.
Right.
Um, and, so you're saying the one that's closer to Porter is the ineffective one?
Yes, yes, it's, it's, like you say, it's in the street, it's not up against the curb.
Right, right. Okay. Um, good. At this point, if I may, I will end, or not end, but I will certainly open it up now to public forum, so that as we have been talking about sidewalks and drains and everything else, if someone would like to comment about that, or comment on any other issues, I welcome comments from the public at this time. I do want to, um, Kier.
Thanks, everyone, thanks for your service to the town of Washington. My name's Kier Whitson, I'm the Hampton District Representative on the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors. I met on Saturday morning with the Board of Directors at the Washington Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company, and let them know that my board colleagues, at least preliminarily, have given the okay to fund with county ARPA money, the installation of some fire hydrants, possibly on Piedmont, and then, to the extent your water line goes out on Fodder Stack, maybe one or two out there.
Okay.
So I just want to let you know that they're excited about that. So I just want to let you know that they're excited about that. And I'd like to expedite that project if I could, working with one or more of you. And also Sean Polster, our County Emergency Services Coordinator, has agreed to help to make sure that we do all that right. So I could be in touch with any one of you. And then let's just get that going and get it done before the end of the year if we could. On the second part of this is I had a, I had a brief conversation with Mr. Bennett some time ago that suggested that maybe your bondholder on the sewer system might allow for a sewer extension over to Company One. Company One is eager to be tied into your sewer system. And I understand that perhaps a, a T could be installed during the Rush River Commons sewer installation project. So I hope you'll go ahead and do that. Company One's already voted on it from a board perspective. And I would also like to try to compel my colleagues to fund the sewer hookup out of county ARPA funds, which are in the range of 1.4 million dollars. So a fire hydrant and a sewer hookup, and I think that's good news for everyone. And I look forward to working with you on all that. And I did take a header walking into the courthouse, going to a planning commission meeting. So happy to help you out with whatever we can do on the sidewalks there. I felt it for a couple of weeks, but I'm 52, so I don't recover like I used to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Youngster.
Youngster.
I welcome one of our newest residents, Reverend Keeler, for being here. And I'm sorry that, I'm glad you came to one of your local town council meetings. I'm sorry that we spent most of the time talking about wastewater. But that's local town. This is your second one. Gotcha. Nancy, did you want to say anything?
Pardon my outburst about the sidewalk. But it was kind of visceral. I mean, that is so old. It's terrible. When it rains, the bricks on the lower end become slippery. Even with thread issue, it, it is dangerous, but it is historic. And I would hope that we could work with the county to get something that sets the brick in a new base, maybe to even it out. I, I don't find the idea of a tinted concrete with, with brick indentations appealing. It's just not, it just doesn't go with the architecture. I, I'd like to see something that was more authentic. I know the bricks, many of the bricks are bad, but some are good. One area has been repaired, as you will now. That's still not great, but, and it was done a while ago. But.
Is that the section with the gray bricks?
But, you know, that's where most people go into the courthouse. But it, there ought to be some money between the two entities. Or, or maybe another grant somewhere to, to maintain.
Well, that's where I'm thinking, Mary Ann, maybe if we could, between the town, bringing this up and then maybe working through the county administrator, he might know of something in, you know, the two governmental agencies going to Richmond and saying, look, you know, we'd like to do this because it's safety and it's this and that, but it's also still historic. You know, that might give us a little more weight to, to get that done.
The courthouse and, and outbuildings are designated as an historical district. Does the sidewalk come with that? Is that part of the designation?
I know they have significant structures. So you can have buildings and then significant structures. I don't know if a sidewalk constitutes part of that, but I.
I can check later.
It's a good point.
When you consider the sidewalks around those buildings are just, they're cement and not brick. And maybe years ago, they were brick. It got pulled out and at least they poured concrete there. So my guess is that sidewalk along Gay Street probably wouldn't fall into that. The most likely would be the fence. They would consider that part of historic, but not that sidewalk once you cross over that thing. But I think, like I say, if we could get the county to support us in that, there's got to be some restoration money. You know, it might even be at a federal entity that would say, yeah, well, we've got some money to help you put that sidewalk in. Well, and if V, and if VDOT's willing to at least repair the base, pull all that out and level it and smooth it out, I mean, there's one state agency who's willing to jump in and be part of this thing. We, we ought to be able to find support.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's coordinate then.
And one more item, the, the drains on Porter. The one near the packing shed and the one at the base. Chuck and I used to clean them out. I, I'd go up there with my shovel and I'd, I'd sweep off all the dirt. But the pipe, the major pipe under there is something like two thirds, three, or two thirds full of gravel. It's, it's completely blocked up all the way. But that water, that, when those drains, both of them are clogged, goes all the way down Main, past my house, in my driveway. And then on down to Foster Harris. And it brings a lot, you know, in heavy rain, it brings a lot of water into both our yards.
Do you know, does that drain go onto Chuck Akri's property? Or does it go down to?
Where's the drain empty out to?
Yeah. Do you know where that empties out?
It goes downhill by the wood property, what is now the wood property. And I don't know what it does when it gets to the entrance to the Sullivan's property. There used to be a long drain there and it seems to go and sit in there. Kind of.
Do you think they'd have a perforated pipe running perpendicular?
I'm not sure what they've got under there, but.
Steve Kreiser redid the drain at the corner of Main and the wood property recently. He and his men went in there and cleaned all that out, all the way down. And I think, I could be wrong, but I think they put a pipe under the paving. Still not sure where that goes.
Yeah. We'd have to check. Well, VDOT should know because it goes under their roads and those are all part of those street systems. So they must have a drawing somewhere where those drains go. Because the solution is you have to come in with a jet truck and you run backwards up through there and that flushes all that sand and gravel out. You can get them very clean. It takes a big, powerful machine to do that.
And I think that's what VDOT's talking about, they'll also do that.
Yes, yes. They have the equipment to go and do that, but it's like, you know, they have to have a pipe to get into. So it's, again, they must have a drawing somewhere of where that runs across Main Street. And where that goes. Because I don't think Kreiser, he just was connecting for the roof drains off of that building so that it didn't go out into the street. So they've probably just got a perforated pipe running down there with all that, that wall they built and everything. But I don't think he tapped into the actual street drains. Shouldn't have. I think VDOT would not be happy if he did.
I don't think he did. HB gave me a tour last week.
When Mr. Wood was doing his renovations, we were out there talking about some different things. And the topic of where it was draining came up. And I can't remember exactly what was said about it, but Mr. Wood can tell you all about it.
Okay.
All right. Is there any more for public forum? If not, I will go ahead and close the forum, public forum. As I indicated with the amended agenda, we will now have a closed session. Mr. Bennett, do you have the? The motion that I guess I'm making?
The form and motion would be for council to enter into closed session in accordance with provisions of section 2.2-37118 for consultation with the town attorney regarding a specific legal matter, the adjustment of the town boundaries, requiring the provision of legal advice.
All right. So I've made that motion. I was just doing my ventriloquism there. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Do we need a roll call vote?
Yes.
All right. Roll call vote to go into closed session, Gene? Yes?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Joe? Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here.